And everyone, we are being recorded. The meeting is being recorded.
They're live right now? Am I loud enough?
Yeah.
Somewhere.
So this is our annual retiree reception. And thank you all, so many for coming out, friends and families of our retirees. It's always a very special evening. And it's certainly my honor to recognize our retirees this evening. They join what we always refer to as a very prestigious group of retired Lunenburg Public School employees. When added together, this year, our employees have 180 years of service to our students, the schools, and community. It is my hope, it is the hope of all of us, that they, that the benefit our children derived from their dedication, their compassion, and their hard work is repaid tenfold in kind to them with a long, happy, and very healthy retirement. And I know those retirements will be sprinkled with memories of successful careers of making a difference for children. On behalf of our school community, I extend to each of them our heartfelt thanks and sincere appreciation for their service to the Lunenburg Public Schools. And so I'm going to call each one of our retirees that's able to be with us tonight up and tell you a little bit about them. And then we have to present to them, and they might have a few words to say as well. And we're going to start with Mrs. Ford, Ms. Mary Beth Ford. Welcome and thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
You know how much we appreciated all the joy that you've brought to our students for 33 years of service. Mrs. Ford began her service to the students of Lunenburg in April of 1985. And at that time, she was a part-time paraprofessional in the kindergarten and preschool programs. And then, in the fall of 1986, she was appointed as music teacher at Thomas C. Passios. And this is Ford continued throughout that period of time to be both the teacher, the music teacher and instructor at the primary and elementary, and also served the chorus, because you did chorus after school, both the elementary and the middle school as well. And I had the great fortune of being here when Mrs. Ford was doing music, was still a music teacher. And her performances were just something to marvel at. And I was always so impressed with the productions and the students were always gave some of the most amazing performances and were always so attentive to Mrs. Ford. And she rolled right into a part-time music instructor and kindergarten teacher then for one year until we went to full-time kindergarten. So that was about in near 2007 when we were split between music and kindergarten, right, Mary Beth?
Yes.
And then in 2008, went full-time as a kindergarten teacher. Now, we have a special picture and a frame that says, "Thank you for your dedication." And it's Mrs. Ford and her kindergarten classroom with her guitar, with her students. And so she'll look on that, and I know that there's many fond memories of all those wonderful children that she brought such enthusiasm to the classroom and using her many talents, Mary Beth. Mrs. Ford, I always want, also want you to know, served in various leadership roles, including curriculum task forces. She was on the kindergarten self-study team and the building leadership teams. And she worked very diligently, just in the last couple of years, on the standard-based report card revision as well. Mrs. Ford tells us her future plans, that she's going to start her retirement by during the summer and doing some jobs around the house that you're going to tackle, maybe some that have been set aside for a while, and spending lots of time with her family and friends is her top priority. She and her husband love to travel, so they're planning to visit many new places in the coming years. They have a trip to Ireland already booked for the fall, and in the late winter will be in Antigua. So that travel is starting. After break, after a break from working, she anticipates being ready to try some new, perhaps, part-time employment or volunteering. So, thank you so much, Mary Beth, for all you've done for our students and the joy that you've brought, not only to those, but to all of us as the adults who were able to watch those performances and watch you in the classroom. Thank you. Congratulations.
Let me move this over here to make sure. First of all, thank you, Loxie, for your very kind words. My 33 years of teaching in the town of Lunenburg have been very rewarding, and it has been a privilege serving the families of Lunenburg. I've had the pleasure of working with thousands of students in my positions as music teacher and kindergarten teacher, and these special children have enriched my life and brought me countless moments of joy. I have also been very fortunate to work with an amazing staff of talented, hard-working teachers who truly care about their students and our schools. I am proud that I had the opportunity to work alongside such wonderful, dedicated professionals. I will miss working with the administrators, teachers, staff, and students in Lunenburg. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve in the Lunenburg Public Schools.
Next, I'd like to ask Elaine Lysbell, Jill, to come up and join us.
Jill has 31 years of service to the Lunenburg Public Schools. Jill was hired in 1987, and she started working with seventh and eighth grade resource room, in the resource room as a teacher there. Her professional work included doing reading assessment task forces. She was the process coordinator. She was on the eligibility task force and also served as a mentor. She was very active as a teacher, doing after-school activities, very popular ski program, homework club, that was real popular too, I'm sure, talent show. She served as MCAS prep coordinator during the early years of the MCAS, and coordinated the special education summer school and taught in the special education summer school or extended school year. She facilitated and delivered several workshops, and all of these, Jill's focus really in her career has been on inclusion and broadening the opportunities for students with disabilities and all students. She did a workshop called Diversity on Common Ground. She did early learning education best practices, reaching and teaching the reluctant learner with just the name of a few of the workshops that she provided. She was a member of the Pittsburgh State College graduate and continuing education faculty pool. And in February 10th, 2003, she was appointed interim manager of special education, and on August 1st, 2003, appointed as the student services coordinator. In 2012, she was, in '13, she was the interim principal, and then appointed principal to the primary school. And inclusive practices and emotional intelligence has been her focus, has continued there, working with her staff and doing such great work. She's been steadfast advocate for children, her faculty, and the staff. And Jill says her future plans include caring for her grandsons two days per week, spending time with her parents, and she and her husband also plan to travel after he retires. Congratulations and thank you, Jill.
I did write up something because I can't come to a school committee and not speak.
She likes to speak to us.
And I'm always teased by the other administrators that I need to keep it brief.
Yep, look, they're up there right now.
Sure, they're right now, sure. It's been a pleasure to serve the Lunenburg community of learners for 31 years. I am fortunate to have been able to spend as long a time as I have in one place. Who knew when I started the special education teacher in the Turkey Hill Middle School in 1987 as a resource room teacher for grades seven and eight, I would come to wear so many hats and be afforded so many opportunities to take on leadership roles. I am grateful to have worked with so many dedicated, hard-working teachers and support staff and to be part of a supportive leadership team. I would especially like to thank Superintendent Combs for sharing her expertise and guidance over these many years. She is a skilled leader, mentor, educator, and professional, and she taught me so many things through her work. She taught me the importance of kindness, grace, and empathy in the face of adversity. When tempers were high or individuals were upset, she listened, pondered, and then worked to resolve the conflict in whichever way was best and benefited our students. Her tenure here as a superintendent was remarkable and moved her district into the 21st century. She has assisted us in producing some remarkable human beings. I am proud to have served as a teacher under her direction and then as an administrator alongside of her. I wish her the greatest joy in her retirement.
That wasn't about you.
Additionally.
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 Of course, there's more.
I would like to thank the staff, the students, and the parents that have had the, that I've had the pleasure of working with over these past five years at the Lunenburg Primary School. We have a great village. It's a loving, caring community of teachers, parents, and children, and we've worked really hard to learn and grow together. I am so proud to have worked with all of them. I will truly miss the children. They make me smile and laugh every day. It's pretty amazing, some of the things that they come up with. And I will need to write a book, I think. Finally, I would like to thank the school committee for your support over these last few years. I could leave you with one thought or guidance to keep in mind over these next several years as you do your work. Our students need your support and attention, most in the beginning of their educational career. The focus of the primary needs to be kept on developing the whole child. Teachers and parents need your continued support in acquiring the resources necessary to do that well.
The money, money.
Thank you very much for all of your support.
Thank you, Jill.
Mrs. Byer, Ms. Jeanette Byer. 31 years of service. Mrs. Byer was appointed in August 1987, and at that time, she came in as an afternoon preschool aide. In the letter of appointment, the principal noted, "Mrs. Byer is a Lunenburg resident and parent who has been actively involved in volunteer work for the past several years." So now, we're going to pay her to do this job. She holds a bachelor's degree, didn't hold it, you already, you still do hold it, right? You still have that bachelor's degree, and you've been involved in home daycare and other preschool activities. You continued as a paraprofessional, working with our youngest children to this day, and it would be difficult, very difficult, to find a more dedicated, dependable, and caring individual. As an example of her dedication, I want you to know that I also found a letter from Jeanette to a former superintendent, volunteering to take a week of unpaid furlough, but planning to come to work during that time regardless, so the classroom would not be short-staffed. That's the dedication that Jeanette had shown time and time again to the students of this district. She worked the extended-year program for many years and participated in many professional development opportunities to keep her skills fine-tuned. Her future plans, she says, are doing a lot of what she's been doing already, spending time with her family and friends, traveling and enjoying her place on Hickory Hills Lake. Since her three children and nine, soon to be 10, grandchildren live in Lunenburg. The family is close at hand, and travel is easier when not tied to the school calendar. She hopes to find more time to read, and there are some projects, she says, around the house which she plans to jump into that have been put aside for several years. Jeanette, thank you for everything that you've done for our students and/or the privilege of working with you these many years. Congratulations.
You have so.
Well, I have a daughter who has no problem getting behind a microphone. She can talk forever. That is not my comfort zone. If I was looking at three, four, and five-year-olds, I'd be fine. I could even dance up here. But I do want to thank all the parents I've had the privilege of getting to know and all the children and the families. Last night, I was watching the selectmen's meeting at home, and they appointed Sam Christensen to reserve police officer. Well, I remember when Sam started preschool. He wouldn't leave his mother's side. He kicked and cried, and I could only lure him away with some little plastic animals. And now I look at him, and he's going to be protecting us. And there are just so many stories, and like Jill said, I should have written a book. Maybe we can collaborate and get together on that. One of my grandsons, Sean, said, "My mama said you're retiring," and I asked him, "What does that mean?" He goes, "There won't be a Mrs. Byer anymore."
Oh.
And I shed a tear. It's just like, whoa, you know, because that's sort of become my identity. Currently, I have five of my grandchildren in the primary school, and they do call me Mrs. Byer unless they have a slip-up. And so it's going to be a difficult transition, and I just wanted to end with one little story. Many of the young children think that perhaps teachers live all together and sleep at the primary school. And last summer, I went into the Lunenburg Public Library to attend an event that my grandchildren were attending, and a little preschooler circled me, and he said, "Where are Ms. Flynn and Mrs. McCall?" And I said, "Well, they're at their homes for the summer." And he hesitated for a little bit, and he said, "So you live at the library for the summer?" And I, those are the kind of things that I wish I had, I will write down, because they're just so precious. And it's been fun to watch the children go through the system, my own children, grandchildren, being able to follow students as they, through the newspaper, you know, athletic events, and watch them grow up, and then bring their children back to the preschool. And many of the people here, I've had their children in preschool, including Mrs. Blaisel's twins in 1987, the year I started as well.
And?
Yes, yeah. So again, thank you, everybody, for giving me the privilege to work with your children.
Deborah was hired as a music teacher at TCP in August 2007, and she's worked there full or part-time at the TCP or the primary, and most recently at Turkey Hill Elementary School. She's been a member of our curriculum task forces, taught recorder karate after-school, and was instrumental in bringing the African Culture and Arts Program to Lunenburg, just amazing opportunities for our students. I would have the wonderful opportunity to go see the Carnival of Animals, which was an amazing production that the elementary school students put on last week, and we really appreciate the time and effort that you devoted to helping those students prepare for that. They did a great job. Mrs. Smith has worked closely with her district colleagues, and she's attended the music performances of her colleagues, and she's also played in the pit for our musicals as well. So she's been very active here. And I know that Deborah has also taught music, piano, and private lessons for over 30 years at this point in time, and has some other talents as a visual artist as well. So I was going to read your future plans, Deborah, but perhaps I just hand you the mic and let you talk about that, because it was such a lovely story of tapping into another creative part of you. So can I do that?
Sure.
Sing them.
Well, don't tempt me. I don't have the long history with, in Lunenburg, that some of the people have. Mary Beth was my mentor when I started teaching. So I've sort of done a number of different things, and what I'm doing is going back to one of the careers that I used to have as a visual artist and book illustrator. So I, two and a half years ago, got back into drawing with pastels, which are, that's the medium that I love, and I'm looking forward to doing more drawing and art and get back into that. Not that I won't be doing music still, but, so I have loved, I see kids out here that, you know, they're my buddies when we see each other at the grocery store. So how about, would you join me in, everybody, you know this song? Ready? Hot cross buns. Sing, come on. Hot cross buns, hot cross buns. One a penny, two a penny, hot cross buns. So music's for everybody. Enjoy.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of other retirees who unfortunately weren't able to join us, already busy with their schedules and future plans. Ms. Anna Keegan, you know that Mrs. Keegan is retiring after teaching what she describes as 18 rewarding years at Lunenburg High School. She's right now out of town grading national AP exams, but she doesn't plan on retiring from the field of education. Her immediate plans include working as a consultant for the college board AP program, venturing into the area of educational consulting, and keeping in contact with students through various volunteer programs here and abroad. Ms. Keegan plans to spend time pursuing her interests also in tennis, golf, and skiing, as well as gardening, cooking, and of course, enjoying time with her family and friends. And we certainly met, wish Ms. Keegan all the best. Also, with 12 years of service, Ms. Dawn McWorld was a paraprofessional primarily at the high school level, but also at the middle school level. She taught many summers as an extended school year paraprofessional, and she's, right now, she retired in March, and she's taking care of her new granddaughter, spending time with her family and working part-time. And we also wanted to acknowledge Ed Wilkins. Ed has been with our maintenance department for two years now, and he's made many contributions to Mr. Long's teams and the district and how everything looks and works within the district. We were happy to have him for these two years, and he shared with me that he and his wife recently downsized to a small home in Hubbardston. The house evidently needs extensive renovations, so that's going to be his new job, he said, for the next few months at least. And after that, they hope to have time to travel and spend time with their granddaughter. So I just want to also acknowledge and ask you to acknowledge these retirees from our system.
So I'm just going to take a moment to thank our superintendent, Combs, Loxie Jo, for her years of dedication to the students of Lunenburg Public School District. She has been an important team player since her hire date of July 1st, 1997, correct?
Correct.
When she took on the role of special ed director, instructional service director. I have a few fun facts about Superintendent Combs, because this is not going to be a cry fest for me. She grew up in Guernsey, Wyoming?
That's correct.
She used to take off on horseback to her grandparents' home about a day's ride away.
Actually, that was my mother, but...
Oh, that was your mother? Oh, okay. She worked in Evanston, Wyoming, Wyoming, and received her bachelor's degree from the University of Wisconsin.
No, University of Wyoming.
Why do they, this is the facts they give me. I have, fun facts are not fun when they're given wrong. She received her, is this correct? You received your master's degree from Utah State University?
That's correct.
Oh, thank goodness. Her husband, Charlie, is also, is a kindergarten teacher who is also retiring this year.
That is correct.
She has two sons, Silas and Stefan, both now living in Massachusetts.
That is correct.
She has two grandchildren, Max and Liv. Liv, who was born on May 3rd, 2018.
Month old.
Month old. She has a beagle named Sukie, who she adores. Is that true?
That is true.
But Sukie loves to run away from you into the woods. Is that true?
But Sukie always comes back.
She does, thank God. You recently got a condo in Grantham.
True.
Where you like to hike and get away from, Lunenburg.
So.
Yes. Your favorite candy is Good &amp; Plenty, is that true?
That is true.
Do you drink, do you eat that with wine? That is red.
The favorite wine is red.
Okay.
Indeed.
And we thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
And your partnership with the school committee.
Thank you.
And so we, I don't want to cry, so.
Let's not cry.
No.
We're not crying. No, it's a joyous time. You know, I can't say it enough times, this was just such an amazing experience for me. It was fate that brought me to Lunenburg, because I was looking for a position where I was very concerned about how separate education systems were developing pursuits with disabilities and other students. And Lunenburg, being Lunenburg, offered this position that combined a curriculum coordinator position with a special ed director's position. It was like perfect. So coming out of the University of Utah, I said, "That's the job for me." And it was back in an area where my husband grew up. So I came to Lunenburg, and then you all know the rest of the story from there in terms of having the opportunity during a really dark period for our district of being able to help everyone move through that and re-establishing the integrity of our school department. And I just had, the teams, the administrators, the teachers, I've had the opportunity to work with. I've learned so much from, I've had the distinct opportunity to work with school committees who are so committed to children and work so hard, and I keep, I always said to them, you know, "I get paid for doing this job. You guys all volunteer." And it's quite remarkable to me just what an important part of public education are our community boards and how we need to make sure that we show our appreciation to the people that are doing this work as volunteers, because they are there to help us have a system that really addresses the needs of children. And so we're lucky to have that involvement that we've had, just marvelous people that have served on the boards. I am most proud of the work that we've done together, all of us. There's been times when we've had conflict, no doubt, but, you know, we haven't let that stop us from doing what we needed to do for children. So we mended fences, we talked, we regained our conversation, being a respectful and civil one with each other. We modeled that, I hope, for our students, so they could see how that works, and we keep growing. And I know the future of this district is bright, because you have wonderful teachers, you have fabulous children that you share with us, and it's a community that believes in education and knows the importance of education, and it's been my greatest privilege to be able to serve. So I thank everyone. And for those that need to, we will take just a minute to let you exit, if that's where you're at in your space at this time. I've been open to you. I'm so used to being the last one on the list. I signed as the last one on the list.
You know, I don't know where this conson came in.
Yeah, it was fun.
Because I didn't want to be.
No.
No, I didn't expect it. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, you guys. I think I saw Mrs. Wardwell.
Mrs. Wardwell and Stephen.
Yes, they're here, they're here. Anna and Stephen are here.
Oh, who's all this?
Try to do it, and I have to...
Goodness.
It's snack time!
We are.
Well, I think I will just bypass my report because it's really part of the new business and the appointment of the superintendent. So we'll just go into, we have warrants on the table to approve?
Yes. I'm delinquent with the warrants.
You are delinquent.
I gotta catch up.
They're in process. We have minutes to approve.
Those were sent out. Yes, those were sent out earlier.
Yes, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special meaning minutes for May 31st, 2018, and June 5th, 2018.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, it's the superintendent's report.
Yes. And I'm so excited to have two of our students and graduates with us. And Mrs. Wardwell is here as well. Thank you, Mrs. Wardwell, for coming out on yet another night to be with us and to support the students. But they're here to share their experience around the Nashville music trip that was completed about three weeks ago now?
No, April-ish, right? April?
Okay. So please, Stephen and Anna and Mrs. Wardwell, come up, please. And thank you for taking time out of your schedules to do this. We really appreciate it.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us. I'm gonna let them do most of the talking, but I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of all the students and the parents, for supporting the Nashville trip. I know it was something new and different, certainly could have posed some challenges, but it was a wonderful experience for the students, for myself. Faith Merchant and Katie McGuire were the other two adults that traveled with us. And it was seamless, an amazing city, and we still smile just thinking about it. So thank you for taking a chance on us and letting us have that experience. So I will hand it over to Anna Curtin and Stephen Olson.
I also wanted to say thank you for, like, approving it and everything. It was amazing. There are so many highlights that I have to that trip, and it's just, it was awesome. We did a lot. I've always wanted to travel down to Nashville because it's Music City, and I've been, like, I love country a lot. So just being there and hearing how much, like, music is played downtown, like, for Broadway, it was just amazing.
Whatever you want.
Hi. I guess it's my turn now. Former student and now graduate of Lunenburg High School, and that's really weird to say. Not taking much time out of my schedule because I don't have any homework to do. It's bizarre. So Nashville, I mean, I can almost say it was life-changing, the experiences I had. About, not even 20 minutes ago, I was at home talking to my mom, and she was looking for a new background on her computer. I was like, "Well, maybe you should put, maybe you should make Broadway in Nashville. It's got a bunch of neon lights, it's beautiful." And I was scrolling through Google Images looking for a picture to use, and I was just telling her all these stories about all these places we went. And I saw this place called Tootsie's Orchid Lounge. And I believe it was Monday afternoon, we had nothing left on the itinerary. We'd finished everything, so we decided just to go up, go upstairs. We heard music coming from upstairs, as you do from every single place in that city. So we heard music, and we just had to go upstairs, and there's this couple playing. And they noticed that we were a music group, so they said, "Oh, it's awesome, and why don't you guys sing a song with us?" So we sang "Wagon Wheel" by Darius Rucker with them. And then they called us onstage, and we sang the song that we recorded at RCA Studios with them. And after, me personally being a musician myself, you can find me at the Dragonfly Cafe Friday nights. First Friday of the month. I, I went up to the guy and I said, "It's really hard to make it playing country in Massachusetts." And he goes, "Wait, you, you play guitar?" "Yeah." "You sing?" "Well, kinda." So the gentleman, and I'm never gonna forget this moment, he took off his guitar, handed it to me, and said, "Here you go, knock yourself out." So, a little background about Tootsie's Orchid Lounge, right behind the stage on which I played is the Ryman Auditorium, which is also known as the birthplace of country music. So what would happen between shows at the Ryman Auditorium is all these big country acts from way back would come to the open mic at Tootsie's, and they'd play on the very sa, on the exact same stage that I played, that I played on. And it was life-changing, and looking at all the neon and me being a big country fan myself, whenever someone, whenever I heard Nashville in a song, it was always something that I just, like, I had to imagine. And I imagined what it was like. And now that, now that I've seen it, I don't have to imagine that anymore. And it's just, it's amazing to think about and like, to be able to imagine, whenever someone says Broadway Nashville, I can imagine, I can imagine my own experiences, I can imagine seeing the Steve Yellow before a Predators game, the first night we were there, and being all confused as to why Nashville, being so far south, is a hockey town. And going to the Grand Ole Opry and just seeing all this stuff, it's just, I can't wait to go back. So, thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you for letting me speak before you today.
And what are your plans?
My plans, I'm studying, I actually just took my placement exam today. I'm studying history at Pittsburgh State University.
Okay. Any music in there?
Um, I'm gonna try.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep playing at the Dragonfly, their open mics. But other than that, I don't know what they have. I'm gonna find out.
Okay.
Stephen, would you share what you did at Senior Showcase and who you sang with?
So, with my dad, I played, I played a song by three country artists, Charles Kelly, who if you know Lady Antebellum, he's the male vocalist, Eric Pasley, and Dirks Bentley, and they have a song put out called "The Driver." And it's a beautiful song. It's got three acoustic, it's three vocals and three acoustic guitars, and I thought it was beautiful the first time I heard it. And I figured, well, I have a 12-string guitar, which is basically two guitars, and I have my dad, who was, who taught, so my dad taught me music, and he taught me everything I know, well, most of everything I know. I have to give Mrs. Wardwell at least some credit. So he got me into music and every, like, he'd play his acoustic sets when I was about, like, when I was six up until I was 15, when he moved out. I would stay up at night at my 8:30 bedtime, and I'd know every lyric to every song that he played. I didn't know how to play guitar yet, but I kinda knew what the chords were. And it was really, so I figured, what better way to honor him than to have him onstage on my, on my last performance on the stage of Lunenburg High School. So I, I played the song "The Driver" with him, and it was, I almost cried at part of it. I almost cried when we were practicing it. It was...
I cried for you, Stephen, because it was beautiful. It was great.
But yeah, it was, it was an amazing experience, especially, I mean, especially after being at the home of country and knowing what it's all about now. And it was amazing. So, thank you again.
Thank you again. Wonderful, and thanks for letting us.
Once again, just, just outstanding work, and you always make us so proud when you travel because you represent your community, your school, and yourselves so very well. So thank you.
They make my life easy. It was seamless.
Is that something you want to plan annually?
So we typically would travel every other year. So it would be the kind of thing we would do maybe once every four years.
Okay.
So every student has a chance to go. I would like to go to Austin, too, maybe, which is another Music City like that. But it's, it's an expensive trip. And I would love to have more students come along, but if we did a smaller trip every other year, then they could save up for a big trip like that where we're flying and, you know, you need to spend more than one night or two nights there to really soak it in.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, we had time, which we don't always have in other places, to just walk the streets and like, "Oh, this sounds good. This mother-daughter duet sounds great, let's go in there. Oh, they have an upstairs and a downstairs, and it's different." And we had a full itinerary, but we had this downtime to really just kind of get immersed in the whole thing. And that, I think, for me at least, is what made it really special. So, for four years.
I say you go back to Nashville. Every four years, go right back to Nashville.
Thank you, Mrs. Wardwell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did bring the, the program from...
From the showcase.
From the showcase. I'll pass it around for you. And it was recorded, so you can, you find it on the cable.
Oh, on cable.
It was recorded? Good.
Some outstanding performance.
Is it on YouTube, you think?
If it was recorded, it should be. But I don't remember seeing it.
I'll check with the cable folks and, and see if we can get the, the link and, and share it out with everybody, because it's well worth the time. The expo, I think we talked about last time, was, was just another amazing performance, and, and to have the art show as part of that is such a nice transition from the old pops, which we all cherished and really loved, but it's a really nice next step in growth and change. So, I also wanted to tell you that the senior awards ceremony, I know all of you were very busy that evening because you had a candidate interview. It was just always such a moving experience to be there and to have so many families come back and talk about the scholarships they're presenting in the name of a loved one that perhaps they lost, or just remembering the service of that loved one to, to the community and, and, you know, certainly sharing their generosity in, in funding these scholarships for the students. And I just really appreciate hearing those stories about the individuals around those scholarships, and, and I also brought the program from that for you to, to look at as well. So wonderful graduation outside, the weather report turned just in time, and we had a beautiful graduation. The students were amazing in their speeches, in their performances, the music performances, the music selections that they chose. It was an outstanding, another outstanding Lunenburg graduation, very moving, and moved right along as well. Everybody recognizes that getting to the, handing out of those diplomas is what it's all about. And so we moved right along, and we had a beautiful day. It was nice and warm outside. The pollen was a little thick, but it was just most enjoyable, and it was a very wonderful way to send our, our graduates off. And thank everybody who had such a big contribution to making sure that every was, everything was in place. Mrs. Cooney and the office staff at Lunenburg High School, Mr. Spadafino, for the guidance office as well, Mrs. Cavioli and Mrs. just do a marvelous job of making sure that that's a very special ceremony for everyone, and I want to be sure to express my appreciation to all of them as well. So that's our superintendent's report for tonight.
Okay. So now, we are on to the student reps report. I won't forget you today.
So as Superintendent Combs mentioned, graduation was this past weekend, and it did run very smoothly. Something a little special about this graduation was that the students were able to decorate their graduation caps for the first time, which is something that the student council at the high school has been working really hard to make happen over the past few years. And I think overall, it was really exciting for these students. They were able to come together and make, or hopefully start a new tradition of decorating the caps with your friends. And then I think they all looked really, really nice up there. So that was exciting. And then the sports seasons are wrapping up. The boys and girls lacrosse teams just ended their seasons yesterday in tough-fought losses. The softball team plays their first district game this Thursday against Northbridge, and then the boys' baseball team got the third seed this year, so they had a bye week. And then they play next Monday, and the team is to be determined. And then our track athletes, the boys, competed in a decathlon today, and then the girls' team competed in a pentathlon today as well. Next Thursday, June 11th, we have sports signups for next fall season, 6 to 7 in the middle school project room. And then also, the student council has been working to set up a new online store, which the link is finally up on the school website, so everybody should check it out. And then, lastly, I just wanted to thank all of you for letting me sit up here for a year and a half, and just say that I've truly learned so much just watching these meetings. It's not super easy coming up here and speaking, especially at the beginning of last year, but I've learned so many skills from all of you that I'll be able to carry on for the next three years. And then I also want to thank Superintendent Combs for everything she's done for the community, and just make sure she really knows that she's had such a large impact on the students in the district. So, thank you.
You're not leaving yet, right?
No, 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 no. I'll be here next year. I just, this is my last meeting this year because I'll be attending Girl State on the 20th, so I won't be here for that meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm here next year.
Eliza's...
You were a little nervous.
Yes, all of us. I believe Eliza's going to actually serve as a mentor and a coach to the, a student who will go follow her, because she'll be a senior next year, and you'll be busy, and so an underclassman is going to be...
I believe Julia Wilson is planning on taking my spot over after I graduate.
Okay.
And thank you. The hats, I'm so glad you remembered to talk about the mortarboards because they were delightful. It was so fun to, to sit up there and see all the creative designs that everyone had put on those, and it really did add something very special. I also wanted to, around graduation, it was, everyone, Mr. Londa, Miss Cavioli, the vendors were working really hard to try to get the banners up that will line the driveway going up. And I know that's one of the gifts from the class of 2018, is to add a banner to that group as well, as that wonderful industrial printer, is how they're referring to it, that they'll put in the library. But I know everybody was disappointed about that, but I just want to reassure everyone that that project is moving forward, and that'll be a nice addition to the driveway and the entryways into the Lunenburg High School shortly, we hope.
Also, the student council actually decided today that we're gonna donate two flags as well.
Really? So that's a total, what is that, seven?
That's four from them, five, six, seven, yeah.
Outstanding.
Love it.
That's exciting.
That is exciting. I can't wait to see that for the beginning of the school year. Okay. So we have a change in our agenda because under new business, the charter review report, we have a delay, so that will come later in the evening. So the first order of new business is the appointment of our new superintendent, which I'm sure is why most of you are here anyway. You didn't want to hear the charter review, did you? Okay, so I would just like to say, take, take a moment to thank the screening committee for sending the school committee three outstanding candidates. On that committee was Chief Marino. The parents were Rhonda Yardeen Yates and Steve Randall, who's here today. Citizens at large were Scott Archer-Petty and Rob Ebersol. The teachers were Mary Foyle and Amy Raboyan. Central office was Liz Peterson. Administration was Brian Spadafino. Our town manager, Heather Lamu, sat on the committee, and my fellow school committee sat with me, member Meredith Weiss. So I just, that was out, that, I just think the process has been outstanding, because I got to sit on the screening committee and now on the school committee, and I just think it has been a really smooth process, thanks to our MASC rep, Dorothy Presser, who assisted me a great deal in the process, and Mr. Cassidy, our HR guy down there, who also helped me a great deal. So in March, we had a forum for the community to attend, and they gave us feedback on what they were looking for in the next superintendent. And they were looking for someone who was passionate, inspirational, innovative, and a collaborative leader. They were looking for someone with a doctorate, a long-term team player, someone who would develop a strong, self-sufficient administrative team, which they have the ability to do now that we have a lot of administrative hirings. The bonus of a grant writer, they wanted someone who would find a teacher's passions and reconnect them with why they became teachers, a former classroom teacher, a community leader, and a partner with the town, someone who would find connections with our students, and is current on new trends and eager to bring new ideas to the table. So, with that, we are going to, oh, let me look for my other piece of paper. We have a process now. We are going to, where did I write it? Oh, I sent it in an email to you guys. So we're going to discuss our candidates and figure out the vote makeup of what we need to appoint our new superintendent, which would just be a majority of three going forward if we wanted to appoint them. So...
Personally, I'd like, like us to see a...
Oh, unanimous.
Unanimous.
Yes. I feel very strongly about that.
So I'm going to move that we proceed to the discussion... So I'm going to move that we proceed to the discussion related to the superintendency and the appointment of a superintendent of schools.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we are going to discuss the candidates and we would like to see a unanimous vote? Is that what it's, we would like that?
I would love to see a unanimous vote.
Okay.
I think we can make that happen.
Okay. You think we can make that happen?
I think we can.
Okay. Who would like to start?
How are we discussing? What is the manner? Is it an open discussion?
Yes.
Is it, so are we putting, are we...
I would think that you would just talk about who you are going to recommend.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay. So would you like to start?
I would like to start. I would like to put forward Dr. Kate Burnham as our next superintendent. I tried to think about, you know, when we put together our flyer that went public and we thought about all of those things that you said, all of those qualities we were looking for. I then sat back after, you know, all information we've had over the last few months, and these were five areas that I wanted to highlight regarding Dr. Burnham that I felt like were in alignment with our vision, our goals, where we wanted to see the district go. She has inclusive, collaborative, expansive leadership skills, including central office experience. Her experience and success partnering with and leading district staff to stay connected, grow and feel passion for their jobs as educators through directed individual professional development. She is student-centered and is committed to community connection and engagement. She believes that building trust and confidence through open communication and listening creates strong relationships with all stakeholders. And she has clear, in-depth plans for creating budgets that support, my glasses off for this part, that support not only the district priorities, but our strategic plan. So our district has priorities, but obviously our strategic plan guides us and she communicated clear, in-depth plans for how to bring us there.
I can go next? You can just jump in whenever, you know.
I would also like to recommend Dr. Kate Burnham. As I thought about the candidates, I was thinking about, as a parent, who do I think would be the best to bring teachers together to help support my students, my son and his friends and everyone coming up behind him and around him? As a school committee member, who is someone that I think that I could work with and that the current board and future boards could work with? As an educator, someone that I wanted to work for and that I really believed that other teachers at the elementary, the middle, and the high school would want to work for as well. And then as a community member, someone that I thought could really communicate with all the stakeholders, forming budgets, solving conflicts, making tough decisions, and doing it in a way that was passionate, honorable to everyone, listening to their ideas, bringing those ideas together and making the tough decisions when they needed to be made. So that's why I would like to see Dr. Kate Burnham.
For reasons already stated, I would also like to put forward Dr. Kate Burnham. In addition to the fact that when we had our opportunity to talk with her last night, I found her answers to our questions to be creative. We did, as part of our community forum, think, look to somebody who would think outside the box. She came with some very interesting solutions to several of the questions that we answered, the budget being one of those questions. I just found that she embodied the ideals that we were looking for almost to a T. I could not find anything in her, in the research I did, the background, the phone calls I made, talking to anybody that would indicate that she would not be able to lead the schools and to work with each of the stakeholders to advance the agenda. And one of the things I found very interesting was that, one of the first things that she asked for when applying was a copy of the strategic plan, so that she knew what she was getting into. And I think that speaks volumes to where her focus was to that, and the additional feedback that we received from the community was also very positive for Dr. Burnham. And there was that recurring theme, I'd love to work with this person. And I think that she is a very strong person to take over.
Carol?
I would also support Dr. Kate Burnham as our next superintendent, obviously for the reasons everyone else has stated, but also her vast experience will allow her to come in and do the hiring necessary that she will need to do immediately. Her experience with collaborating over districts, over professional development and curriculum work is outstanding and I think she is the best fit for us at this time.
Is it unanimous?
I think it is unanimous because I feel exactly the same way. I think that she had such a broad background that she brings to the table for our district, not only as a school teacher, curriculum development, special ed director that she just was recruited for and took that on and was highly successful in her current district. I think that she offers our community so much that I think we would be fools not to take her. I really do. I think that she has such an excitement about her. I am very excited at what she brings to Lunenburg. So do we want to do a roll call vote?
We do. I wanted to say one more thing. In getting to spend time with her yesterday, all of the professional experience, it is vast and it's there and it's all of what we're looking for, but there was a heartfelt piece, something that's, you know, in community connection, in connecting with staff, in connecting with students, in connecting with parents, there's a heart piece as well. And that was so present and...
Yeah, just a connection, it was...
Absolutely.
It was just there.
Our district would be very...
The value she places on relationship building.
Yeah, she's so student-centric, it's all about the kids. And you can truly feel it when she speaks, that it's all about the students. And that's why we're here.
Absolutely.
So I will take a roll call vote now. So how do we do this?
Does she call it out?
You can take it, yes.
Wendy Burgen.
Yes.
Meredith Weiss.
Yes.
Jim Lebec.
Yes.
Carol Archibald.
Yes.
Okay, so then we're going to take a recess and contact her right now to see if she will accept the position of superintendent. Okay, and then we'll come back and let you know.
Got a commercial or whatever?
Gosh, I hope I don't say no.
She answered the phone.
Okay, we're going to wait in that room.
In that room. It's kind of messy, you can move that stuff if you need to.
Okay.
And for the audience that's waiting, help yourself to cheese and crackers.
Mike, would you give me a bottle of water, please?
That's pineapple, you know.
The reach right in front of you.
Yeah, it's been, Liz is so sick right now.
And we just wondered if you were going to accept the position, so we can continue our meeting.
Okay, great. And so then we're going to go start the process tomorrow of contract negotiations with our attorneys.
We're very excited, we are so excited to have you on board.
Oh, that's great.
Just like that?
Well, we want to close the door, we forgot we're in an open meeting. We really can't do that.
Can't do that.
That's kind of not right.
No privacy.
Okay, yeah, no, she's, so you'll scoot out. Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you for everything.
Okay, so good, you all know she accepted the position and so the next part of the process is to do contract negotiations with our attorneys. So we'll keep you up to date on that and what her start date will be. Our next meeting is the 20th, so hopefully we'll have some information to provide to you at that time. So now we will progress.
Not as exciting after you...
Now we're done.
Who's following that?
Mr. Sandry's like, hey!
Mr. Sandry! No, is he coming out of order?
I've got an improvement plan and a handbook.
Oh, he's in order, okay. Oh, yeah, we love improvement plans.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me. So we've had a retirement celebration, a life-changing trip to Nashville, the appointment of a superintendent, and now I get to present my student.
Mr. Sandry!
I think the meeting has officially jumped the shark, so you just bear with me.
After you jumped the shark, it went on for seven more years.
Honestly, thank you for having me here tonight. Before I begin, I just really want to thank my school advisory council, just for the eight years I've been principal, I've just been so lucky to have such dedicated volunteers of parents and teachers that come together and just share ideas and try to figure out what's best for students. And just over the whole time that I've been here, I've just been blessed to be able to work with these people. Amy Powers, Jessica Frank, Brandon Kibbe, Tim Shays Green, Annika Scott, myself, Rob McGrath, just, I'm sorry, Jim Lebec, apologize. I got caught up in all the stir, so. Just being able to get together and talk and work things out and try to do what's best for students. So when we developed our school improvement plan this year, one of our major goals was alignment. We wanted to make sure that our school improvement plan was aligned with the district strategic plan and what they had in plan for the next several years. So our school improvement plan has three goals and those goals are a student learning goal, they're a social emotional goal, and they're a professional development and communication goal. I don't want to read it to you, but I would rather just kind of go over the highlights. And if you had any questions at the end, I'd be more than happy to answer them. So our focus in most of our school improvement, moving into our new building, had been the integration of technology, to make sure teachers were utilizing the technology that came with this brand-new building, making sure that that was being integrated into classroom instruction. So that was our major focus for the last year and for this year. It's going to continue to be our focus, but we want to make sure that teachers are progressing with using that technology, just not being at a beginner level or just not utilizing that in a, I don't want to say in a superficial way, but make sure that we're accessing that technology to the best of our ability. Our Epson projectors, interactive projectors that are in every room, our document cameras, our Chromebooks, we want to make sure that those are being implemented. And our advisory council's actually built in like a check-in in December where I'll report out to them and at that point we'll, I'll show them evidence that this is being incorporated in the classroom, or we're going to talk about what type of professional development that we're going to need in order to get to that next level of integration of technology. But as you know, technology, it isn't all, student learning isn't just about technology. And our school advisory council is adamant about not just to have a balanced objective of having technology and the traditional teaching strategies that teachers have. So we decided to continue to utilize that shared inquiry approach to teaching critical thinking, and that's through our Great Books program that we've been associated with now for several, several years out of Chicago. Great Books isn't a reading program, it's a thinking program. It really teaches kids how to think critically, break down very difficult literary readings and to be able to defend what their argument is, to be able to go back in the text and defend it. And it's a teacher as a facilitator, not telling them what to think, but maybe asking questions where they're going to be able to defend their viewpoint. And it's been extremely beneficial and it was just with the coming of the new building, our focus was on technology, now I want to make sure that we have a balanced approach in every classroom. So we're not just going to be doing the Great Books in ELA, we're going to try to mix it into different content areas as we move through. So that's kind of a synopsis on our goal number one. So our goal number two is our social emotional learning. And so this year, we had our developmental design in our advisory groups and we did that at six, seven, eight, and we met every week and almost every adult in the building was assigned a group of students in which we would do an advisory period. It was about 25 to 35 minutes long. The goal of this advisory was for one, for students to develop goals for the year and to see if they were attaining those goals, but it's also about fostering positive relationships. And it's about having, at least having, one adult in the building that a student feels comfortable with to be able to maybe report out if there was something wrong or to report out when something goes well. We want those close connections to continue in our building. And that's really what fosters that positive climate and culture that we have in the building right now. I had my advisory group in the eighth grade, I had 12, 13 great kids, and I can just report out some of the things that I did. We did that goal setting with each student. I did grade check-ins every quarter, so I would call them up while other kids are doing a hands-on activity. We would look at their grades on Power School and see where they could improve or where they were falling through the cracks, or if they weren't doing their homework. I was able to kind of do a little checkpoint halfway through each quarter. We did goals and declarations as a building, so we developed a social contract from goals that, rules that kids felt that everyone in our school community should follow. We developed those, we put up big posters, you might have seen them in the middle school hallway, just not more like a rule, but more like a declaration, and this is how we're going to behave when we're in our building. So that was one of the major things of our advisory, which I thought was very successful. And that will touch upon our community piece in that social emotional goal. But also for that social emotional piece and the project learning and the community-based piece that I wanted to tie in is our Genius Hour that we piloted this year, which I felt was very successful for asking my teachers in September, here, here's an idea, we want to let students learn about what they want to learn about and you're going to have to relinquish some power and you're just going to have to allow a student to kind of figure out what they would like to do, let them work in teams or let them work individually. And then at the end of the year, I want them to present something that they've done. It's just a really powerful message to kids that they can own their own learning. We're going to continue to do that as part of our social emotional curriculum. I don't know if you've heard about the Lunenburg Skate Park program that was fostered in one of our Genius Hour projects. And it's... And it's steamrolled into learning about our process of how we get things done in, in the community. So I just think it's wonderful. And our third goal is around professional development. And so we want that really to be tied into what our school improvement plan is. We want professional development around our Great Books and around how we're going to continue to push that into different content areas besides ELA. We want it to be around our developmental design, around our social emotional curriculum. We get some more teachers trained on how to provide that developmental design. And maybe in a train-the-trainer model, to come back and train some of our newer teachers that might not be as adept at providing that. And then around technology and around that deeper understanding of how to utilize the technology in our building. So that's a snapshot or a highlight of our school improvement plan. And if you had any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
I'm good. I know this stuff is not easy, it takes a lot of time and effort, and I just wanna express my appreciation to you and all the, all the principals that have, and committee members who've put this, these type of documents together.
Thank you, thank you. Got great, great teachers and great students that make us look good, so it's great.
But Mr. Sandry, I have to commend you for your leadership around the Genius Hour, because I know you came out of the strategic planning piece very impassioned about tapping into students' passion and working with Mrs. Scott and the rest of your faculty. The notion of the Genius Hour has just been, I think, a real game changer for the middle school students and for the faculty too, because there was a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of embracing that. So thank you for providing that leadership and that creativity to make that happen there at Lunenburg Middle School.
Thank you very much, Superintendent, appreciate that.
You're continuing in that until the next year, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good.
So for the student and the parent handbooks, there were some very minor revisions. Some revolved around, you know, even changing what our mission and our vision was. I believe there was a change in the code of conduct and where we added a lunch detention as a possible infraction. That was, a lunch detention was being utilized by our teaching staff, but really wasn't listed in the code of conduct, so I wanted to make sure that parents knew that that was an option. It's for very minor infractions, ones that we wanna nip right in the bud with an immediate kinda consequence, that could be five, ten, or up to fifteen. Sometimes it's the full twenty-two minutes, but not normally. And those would be spent with the teacher in their classroom and kinda reviewing what the minor infraction was. We took cell phones off of our banned articles. And we kinda reworked our cellphone policy, which is, of course, students can have cell phones on them, but they're, unless they're to be instructed by a teacher in the classroom, they're to be off or kept on them.
Yeah.
And then after school, they can access them at that time. Some other very main, oh, we wanted to, in the parent handbook, we made a revision around, just so they know about the security of the building now, that if we don't recognize you at the front door, we're going to ask you for an ID. So if you're coming to pick up your child or if that you have an appointment at the school, don't be offended when someone asks you to see your ID, because there's eight-hundred-and-something kids in the school. So we didn't want that to be a surprise, we want that to become a common practice, that when people show up to the building, they have an ID.
On the little section on honor roll, I think it's just a little typo. Honor roll is calculated four and for sixth grade in the second, third, and fourth grade. I think the sentence comes out funny. Honor roll is calculated four and for sixth grade in the second, third, and fourth quarters.
I'll have to go back.
Take a look at it, it's just a.
The change that was is that sixth grade was only eligible for honor roll for third and fourth quarters. Now they are eligible for second, third, and fourth.
Yeah, so the sentence doesn't affect the meaning of, I mean, that part of it.
Gotcha.
So just check that little piece.
And other, besides the prices of lunch or other minor revisions, I believe that was all, correct, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, there were really just minor changes. But speaking of lunches, I thought I saw, so on the student handbook has cost of hot lunches, three dollars per fifty.
What is that, three fifty?
Three dollars per fifty.
I think it should be three dollars for lunch and fifty cents for milk, right? Is that?
Yeah, so. There seems to be a typo.
I'll fix those two. I apologize for that.
Thank you for mentioning the typo, because I had read that earlier and had forgotten to mention it.
Yeah. When you look over documents a million times now. Yeah.
Happens.
Any other questions I could field? Awesome. Have a good night.
Wish I had the Genius Hour when I was in school.
And thanks for a great trip to DC, three out of the five of us here on this stage had students with you.
Do you have a few minutes?
Oh, yeah.
I tend to ask.
It was a wonderful trip, wonderful trip. It's not often that you're with a hundred-and-thirty eighth graders in a public place in a foreign city, and strangers are stopping you while you're eating breakfast and saying, "Your students are so well-behaved and very respectful." So, I mean, just to be able to hear that, it was wonderful. To be able to go on that trip is memorable, Capitol Building tour, going through our memorials, the riverboat cruise, just wonderful experience for the kids. It is a long trip, even for kids. I mean, we were up at five-thirty, back to the hotel at ten-fifteen. It was long, eleven-hour bus ride there and back, but all worth it, all worth it. Wonderful chaperones, wonderful kids, parents-supported. Very minor glitches that couldn't be managed right there on site. And just the feedback that I get from kids that I ask is that they had a blast. That's the most important thing. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Sandry.
You're welcome.
So I would like to recommend approval of the school improvement plan for the Lunenburg Middle School and also acceptance of the handbook with the changes as outlined.
So I will take a motion.
Motion to approve the Lunenburg Middle School 2018-19 School Improvement Plan and Parent Handbook with changes.
And Student Handbook.
Student. And, oh, and student, parent and student handbook.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. So, where are we on the agenda?
We are about ready to have Madame.
Madame Beardmore.
Madame Beardmore.
Beardmore, come talk about the final arrangements for a wonderful trip that's coming up shortly. Thank you, Mrs. Beardmore, for being here.
Evening, bonsoir. So our trip, we got about nine kids, exactly, nine kids and myself for the trip. So we were unfortunately unable to keep the trip just amongst Lunenburg students. So we've combined with two other schools. One is from Michigan, I can't recall where the other one is from at the, at the moment. But, and we shifted the trip. It was supposed to be on the twenty-first of June, now it's the twenty-seventh of June, which didn't really affect anything. So we'll be leaving on the twenty-seventh of June. I just had my parent meeting this evening, the final, final parent meeting as well. It's very exciting, Paris, and then we fly to Southern France, and then from there we head over to Barcelona, and it's gonna be wonderful. So, do you have any questions? Would you like more details?
Like to go in your suitcase?
The movement of the date, was that advantage, obviously it's, you know, so the kids weren't getting out of school, was that the, the primary reason, so they weren't leaving the next day after they get out of school?
Because you had to do.
Or was there?
No, because we had to combine with other schools from around the country, and everybody, you know, they had put in for different dates than we had. Or it's one school who only has like about five kids, had put in for a totally different trip. So we're very lucky, we got the same trip, just dates shifted.
Right.
So it had to do with, you know, people making compromises, and so, so that we all were able to still get, you know, whatever, close to whatever trip we had wanted, maintaining price as well, so.
With no, yes, that's what.
Maintaining price, right. Like, if we hadn't combined, it would've been a lot more expensive for our students. So that's an advantage to combining with other schools, so.
Very excited?
Very excited. My daughter's coming, so.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if Rose was going.
Yes, yes, she is, and I was just thinking I could actually, because it's just nine students, which is, you know, I mean, obviously I love having a big group to expose more students, but it's also lovely to have a small group, because we have a lot more flexibility. And so maybe during some of our free time, I can actually bring them to some of the places I lived when I was there and, you know, show them the little street that I used to live on. And that, so that'll be, it'll, it'll be, it'll be more than just a trip. But there are always more than just a trip, but this one, this one's gonna be pretty special, because she's going.
Yeah, that.
And Mrs. Beardmore, I just have to thank you and all your colleagues who over the years have arranged and taken so many students and provided these kinds of opportunities to them. And it takes a lot of your time and effort, and, you know, it's a great, it's a big responsibility to travel with children overseas. And you and your colleagues keep stepping up and doing it and making it happen. And I'm so grateful for that as a parent as well as an educator, so thank you. So we certainly recommend final approval of the, the trip, and they're ready to go.
I'll take a motion for.
Move to approve the final trip for France and Spain.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Enjoy.
Thank you, and thanks for supporting educational travel. Thank you.
Okay, then we're on to our second reading of the policies.
Yes, we offered some revised or brand-new policies at the last meeting. They're all posted at the website, and would just recommend waive the reading of them at this point in time. We haven't received any feedback. We will push out some more information. I know we've been focusing up on making sure people had the information around the superintendent's search procedures. But I imagine, Mrs. Soroka, you'll have an announcement to maybe make tonight that we can get out for you or shortly. And then we'll also make sure that everybody's aware of this. And I just wanted to take a moment while we're making folks aware of activities. This weekend, you know, is the Arts Festival here in Lunenburg, and wanna encourage everyone to come out for that. And then on the fourteenth, we're sponsoring at the school a wonderful community fundraiser for AEDs for the police vehicles. There will be a basketball game between the public safety folks and the civilians, as we refer to them. Should be a really fun time, lots of things to raffle off and just encourage folks to come out and support that worthy activity. Once again, the policies themselves are posted at the website. They cover things like our key, having a key policy that who gets issued and what are the terms of issuing keys as well as pass cards. We have the new naming policy that's before everyone, as well as donation policy, fundraising policy. We worked and presented, I believe with the caveat, so I believe we might be in second reading of a policy around the display of trophies, because we did talk about making that exception. And if everybody was, we hadn't really crafted the language, specific language, the concept. I think everyone was in agreement with at first reading, but we hadn't crafted the language, and it sounded like the athletic advisory did want, was appreciative of that happening and did want that to go forward as well. So those were the major policies for second reading.
Right. Okay, so I'll take a motion to waive the readings?
I'll make a motion to waive.
Waive the second readings, yep.
So.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So first reading?
Yeah, a little housekeeping item because of some new laws and regulations around protected class of adding pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions, that those all be added to the nondiscrimination, our equal employment opportunity, our hiring, as well as educational opportunities. So both in any time that, I know everyone's familiar with these policies where there's a list of protected categories. And this phrase will be added to all of those as well. So if, I know some of our handbooks have those nondiscrimination statements in them as well, and we'll make sure that the handbooks carry that as well. So this would be just a first reading, acknowledging that addition to any place that appears within any policy.
Throughout.
Throughout, throughout all the policies, correct.
So we don't need to read all of those policies?
No.
We're gonna waive the reading on all the policies and just include pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions where they refer to protective classes?
I make motion to waive the first reading where we'll be adding pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions as protected class in any of the policies before the school committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, so now we've come to public comments.
Phyllis Lock, Fifty Sunset Lane. I would just like to thank everyone on the school committee and everyone on the search committee for the superintendent. I know what an important job this is and how much pressure there is on you. The school superintendent is such an important role in our community. And superintendent comes, leaves very big shoes to fill. So I know that you felt a great deal of pressure. But in speaking with the candidate that you chose last night, I was very comfortable with her. I thought that she would be a great fit. And I am so pleased for our community that you have made, you have done all of this work, and you've made such a good decision. And hopefully, she can live up to, you know, everything that you've done.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you, Phyllis.
I just wanted to mention that next Thursday, the fourteenth, June fourteenth, is the public forum for the primary school principal candidate search. So I hope people will attend that to.
Be my update too.
What?
That'll be in my update.
Oh, your update, okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget that. Okay, so then we're on, any other public comment from our public? No? Reports? Do we have any school council reports since the last we met?
Not since last meeting.
I don't have any.
Not in the middle school.
No, okay. Wellness advisory committee?
Wellness has not met since our last meeting.
PTO?
PTO did meet on Monday. They did their business at One Ten Grill. I was taking it easy, I took my stuff on rest, so I could be as healthy as I could for today's meeting. And I understand an email's gonna be coming out to all the PTO groups, letting them know who all the new positions, who all the new positions are.
Okay.
We can look to that.
Policy subcommittee?
We have not met since our last meeting.
Okay. Principal search committee?
Principal search committee, I had to type it up, otherwise I would've forgotten everything. So after a period of time, the screening committee have selected the finalists, which will be presented on the fourteenth. And those finalists are Don Marie Ailes from Harvard Public Schools and Bonnie Faulkner from Drakehead Public Schools. Our intention is to complete site visits over the next two weeks. Candidate resumes are currently available and for public release from Mr. Cassidy's office. We look forward to presenting those finalists to the new superintendent, Dr. Burnham. We'll need to formally invite her and the public forum, which will be held on, again, as you said, Thursday, the fourteenth, at six-thirty PM at the Lunenburg Primary School. I believe the AED is seven to nine, so there's plenty of time to do both. This is an opportunity for the public to meet and greet the candidates and ask questions so that they can provide feedback to our new superintendent to make the decision.
Excellent, excellent.
And I guess I get the next one too, athletic advisory.
Double down for you, Jim.
Yay. All right, so our last meeting was on May twenty-fourth. And we had discussed that Principal Spatafino had stepped in to the AD responsibilities. We talked about, and we talked about that, you know, all the things that the AD does that he.
Their role.
That really seemed to be unaware.
Yep.
At some level, so fully understanding the role, I think, is, is great. It's unfortunate that we'll be losing him at the same time, so that, that knowledge won't be imparted. But hopefully, whoever Dr. Burnham hires will certainly have that information, that background. We talked about the proposed policy around the fundraising. We found that it accurately reflected the recommendations presented to the school committee. We talked about this concession stand policy and procedure that Mr. Londa had presented. We felt that it was heavy on procedure and light on policy, and that policy really should be separated from the procedure, you know. So, what we did is that, let's go back and see if we can separate the policy from the procedure and make a recommendation to the policy subcommittee on policy and deal with the lockup procedure and cleanup procedure and all that stuff separately, because it's, they're unrelated, and they shouldn't all be in the same document. At the same time, you know, the, this came up because the, the Board of Health and Showbook Board of Health is, has, is going to prevent us from actually cooking in the, in the concession stand or providing food not made from a certified kitchen, right? So, what, so one of our members, Mr. Diffrinchesco, has decided to delete a smaller group to work with the Initiative Board of Health and say, all right, for us to be able to do what we were doing, which is people bring crockpots or whatever else, what do we need to do in this room to make it compliant that we can still do that? So, we've got two paths going on right now. We've got one saying, how do we get to keep doing what we're doing and not have to spend mon, spend more money to buy, bring food in instead of, of making food? And then, the other path of, let's look at what the procedure is and the policy separate and, to provide that. So, that is in process. Turf painting will take place on August 7th and August 8th.
Turf painting?
Turf painting.
The lines on the turf.
The lines, yes, sorry. So, we also had a very lengthy discussion around middle school athletics. So, Rondejardine Yates had presented some details around the girls' field hockey. She said that there are approximately 25 girls that are currently interested in playing, but there's no feeder program from the town or surrounding the, into our high school girls' field hockey, and that used to exist prior to 2014, apparently. So, we discussed that, you know, we do have a limitation. We have only a certain number of fields. There's only so much space that we can practice on and play on. There's so much we can do with the budget, and there's so much we can do with coaching. So, she did come back and, and say that she believed that the entire program could be parent-funded for approximately 175 per player, which would include the coaching. They're looking at grants to fund future teams. So, that would have been for one year. So, they're looking for grants to fund for the future years. And then, we talked about creative ways of finding field time and creative places to practice, like Marshall Field as an option, or Marshall Park was an option. So, they need, there's obviously some work that needs to be done around the actual field space and scheduling that. But what I would like to recommend to this group is that we invite Ms. Jardine Yates to present to the full school committee a proposal on the girls' field hockey so that we can make a decision how to move forward, because there's not a, like I said, there's not a feeder program currently.
Okay. Can you advise her that she should have more than one-year plan?
Yes, I will advise, well, I'll advise.
Because that's, that's not.
I believe I mentioned to her that we would probably be looking for a five-year plan.
Yeah, because that's not really a plan. That's just one season.
Right.
Miss, Mr. Leveque, our experience has been that transportation is one of the major drivers in terms of, of the teams. So, it'll be important to make sure that the transportation costs, because I assume that with the middle school team, people will come here and play, and our team will go elsewhere and play. So, the transportation needs to be accounted for.
And I know we talked about that, and I don't remember exactly what the top, where we wound up with that, that there were. But I'll certainly go back to her.
Just to make sure that.
Well, when we, when we invite her.
Yep.
You know, and I don't know what, on what agenda we'll be able to fit it, right? I'll have to leave that to the chair to, to schedule.
Yeah.
Obviously, you know, they'd like to have it sooner than later, because the, the season will be starting. So, whenever you can get that on an agenda, then I can, but I will go back to her and tell her that these are things that we'd be looking for when it gets on the agenda to, to be presented.
Also, she might want to have a conversation with Mr. Powell, because this goes back many years when lacrosse first came with, at the high school level, this thought and idea around self-funding. And I'm sure he might be able to just offer some additional ideas or thoughts, because the high school level went through this experience already. I don't know if they have, if there's been anything through advisory, for athletic advisory.
I believe he was on the, at the meeting.
He is at the, he's in the athletic advisory.
Right, I didn't know if they had actually.
Well, I think we talked about it during that. I don't know if she purposely sought out ahead of time, but I will.
Might, just might be a thought.
I will let her know that that's perhaps another avenue to take. Also related to the middle school athletics. So, about a week before the, the agenda was put out, Eric De La Santa reached out to us about middle school basketball, that there are no, no basketball teams for boys or girls anymore. And that we are apparently the only town in the area that does not have a, that does not have a feeder program into the high school basketball through a middle school program. He says that he's been approached by many families, both on the girl's side and the boy's side, about the issue, and he agreed to be the voice to the parents, and so he, he brought that up. Granted, he did not, he had very little time to prepare anything ahead of time for, for the, the meeting. But we did talk about it. We did, again, discuss the constraints of the court time. You know, there's just the one court in the, at the high school. There's funding and coaching. He believed that the funding could be covered by user fees and parent funding. Again, I would recommend to them a five-year plan. We did discuss creative scheduling for court time, early mornings, using potentially the TCP gym after the Boys and Girls Club is done. So, he feels that there are ways to get time in the courts, but for, but this is for the winter. So, there's gonna have to be some very creative scheduling involved.
I'm just wondering, how many teams does he think there will be in the middle school? Because right now, the teams are grade leveled with the Lunenburg.
With LISA or AAU?
No, no, the, the basketball program.
The junior basketball.
Junior basketball. They have a grade.
Travel program and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, they each have a grade level. So, would there be just one team in the middle school program?
But it's not through school.
No, it's not. But so.
And so, that was.
I'm just addressing the fact that that will be a very small amount of students if there's one team that will be on it. It's about 10 kids on a basketball team.
Yeah. He didn't have numbers. He just said many parents, that there's enough to support both the boys' team and the girls' team.
Okay, so it would be 10, 10 girls and 10 boys, about, approximately? Because that's about how many are on the high school teams. There are five on the court at a time.
Right.
It's not a large team. It's not like field hockey with 11 on players or soccer on the team out there on the field.
Right.
I'm just wondering, what, is it gonna be one middle school team? Was he thinking grade-level middle schools?
I think they were thinking one, one middle school team. So, along these lines, you know, we talked about the, the feeder program into the high school and the, the option that we did last year with the, you know, you can practice with us, but you're not necessarily on the team concept. Mr. Spadafino didn't think that that was very successful.
I don't think it was either.
This past year. So, that kind of, nobody seemed to be overly enthused that that could be a possibility.
So, a suggestion I might have is that perhaps they both come on one evening together as a whole idea of middle school feeder program, so that we hear from, from both sports, because they'd both be facing the same challenges. They would both be facing, how, how do we schedule time? How do we deal with busing? How do we, you know, many of the same issues. So, it would be something if we're, if we, as a school committee, are, are hearing this, it might be, you know, a thought to consider hearing it at the same time.
So, that would be, that would have been my recommendation as well.
Right, okay.
One thing that we, we're going to do is that Mr. Spadafino is gonna reach out to Mr. Santri. I don't know if he has yet, and Mr. Santri's gone, about getting, gauging the interests of the middle schoolers for such a program, because they didn't have specific numbers. You know, just many. Many doesn't tell me anything, but, so they were gonna go back and gauge the interests from the middle school students to see what kind of interest there was.
Okay.
So, that's something I would also want to hear. Before we put it on an agenda, I would want to, you know, get an idea of that in, in a report so that, you know, we could figure out if it was something that we should.
Right.
Put onto the agenda. Is, is there, is there enough interest?
Right, and so that's, you know, obviously, so even, even if we put them on the agenda, I think if there wasn't interest, we'd make that decision that they're.
Right, and it sounds like, yeah, yep.
So, at this point, I, like I said, for, for both, I would recommend that we, we add them to an agenda. Obviously, winter sports are going to come up sooner than we think, so I guess as soon as practical.
Yeah, I'll look at the, the next agenda and see how full it is.
Okay, so I don't know, you know, maybe, maybe not June, but.
But, you know, usually, you set the summer agenda with your new superintendent now appointed. Perhaps at the next meeting, you can have the information to get that calendar set.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we may have to wait until we have an AED. I, I don't know.
That is true.
Right.
For scheduling fields. I know they're already working on scheduling fields correctly now.
Right, we can use Mrs. Spadafino until the 14th of July, right?
Yeah.
So. But then, but then I don't know what we have after that in terms of, of scheduling. So, I, I lost my crystal ball. And so, we just kind of need to look for that. So, the next meeting has yet to be determined. We are going to have a meeting end of June, early July, hopefully, because the burning issue right now is that concession stand and the boosters losing money, not being able to use it as they had been. So, they would like to get together before that. And I will reach out to both Mr. De La Santa and Ms. Jardine Yates about the middle school. I'll ask them, I'll CC you so that you know, have their contact information, add them to the agenda so that they know when they're.
Okay.
When we're expecting them to be.
Okay.
Available. So, that was a very long update on the athletic advisory.
I heard that, that meeting was very long.
It was, well, they've been averaging about three hours lately.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah, and, yeah, too, too long.
That's okay, there's a lot to cover.
There is a lot to cover.
It's a lot of people's passion, athletics.
It is, and we just can't cover it all in one meeting. So, we're gonna have to.
You might need to have more meetings frequently.
I'm, well.
The frequency of your meetings may need, are they monthly or are they?
Well, by the charter, we're only supposed to have four a year.
Oh, there, that's advise, that's not, though, you can do more, I think. That's just what you need to have.
We, we're doing more, obviously, but we're only required to do four a year.
Right, you're only, you can do one a month.
I know. So, we are, and we are meeting once a month, and we are meeting once a month.
You need to have more.
It's the never-ending meeting.
So, we, we, I need to do a better job of tightening the agenda into fewer topics and then move discussion on to the next meeting.
Yes, I know there's, it's a large group, so it's hard to move the discussion along.
Well, not necessarily just the discussion, but the top, the, you know, we have five things on the agenda. They each take, you know, 45 minutes to talk.
It's long.
Through with those people, it's very long. So, I need to, I need to shorten the agenda and perhaps meet more frequently.
Okay.
It bears repeating, I, I know you said this, but just to reassure everyone, fall sports signups, I believe, is the 11th.
Monday, Monday night, 6 to 7 PM, middle school project run.
And Mr. Spadafino is working on the field schedules and the rotations and that with Mr. Londa. In fact, we're meeting tomorrow to have some more conversation about that. And then, working with our fall youth sports teams as well. So, everyone, that's all moving along and will be set. So, you won't have this void in terms of not being ready for the fall in terms of a schedule.
And also relative to the schedule, I forgot to mention, there was some discussion about an equal pairing of night games versus day ga, earlier games.
There was that.
There was some, some discrepancy or.
Perceived.
Perceived discrepancy last year that, that some got more late, late games than others. So, he's doing his best to level that out so that no teams are feeling like they're being left with the short stick.
That definitely happened with girls lacrosse this year.
That's, was the example, and I was not.
And it definitely did. I was there. So, it definitely took place. So.
He's working on it.
Yeah, I know. Hey, I, I understand. It's, it's a big challenge.
And then it rains.
And then it rains. And then you have to reschedule it. And then you have to schedule and then fit it in. So, I, I totally get that.
I, I did not realize that the, the chunk of stuff I was biting off when I accepted that, but.
Which is why we, we're like, Jim, Jim, don't you want to do it, Jim? No, Tommy.
And it's, it's good that I don't have students.
In sports.
In sports.
Absolutely, that's why we thought you.
Absolutely, it's why.
Because I don't have a vested interest.
Exactly.
Other than what is in the best interest of the students to enjoy the athletic program.
And you were perfect for the job, and that's why you have it.
Oh, it's getting deep.
Yes.
It's also getting late, so apologies to the TV viewing audience.
Um, we have topics for future discussion. Blizzard rag review again.
That's just, so we don't forget it.
So, we don't forget it.
Um, we're gonna have to put charter review back on there. It doesn't seem like Dr. Adams will be able to attend. I think that she just had stuff at home going on, or she would have been here earlier.
Well, hopefully, we can get Mr. Macken at the same time.
And Mr. Macken, I asked him to attend. I haven't heard back, though. So, hopefully, they'll both come and give us a charter review update so that when we start charter review, we are clued in to what's going on.
Yes, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Because that will be on Wednesday.
So, oh, now we have to go into executive session, is that correct?
We do.
Okay, so we're going into executive session according to MGLC 30A, Section 21A. Is that two? Two, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with the Lunenburg Education Association, not to return to public session. I wrote over it. All in favor? All in favor? Roll call. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for.